Blake Caston.
Great. The first order of business is for Highland Avenue. Actually, we had previously voted on this, but we were informed by the town solicitor that folks hadn't been accorded the proper notice of it. So we're coming again before you. This is Warren, Rhode Island. The owners are Andrea Rose Stewart, Revocable Trust, Platte 1 Symphony 1, Lot 76 and 79. It's a subdivision of adjourning properties, taking land from Platte 17 for Lot 79 and adding it to Lot 76.
Mr. Chair, just for the record, that this is also under the Unified Development Review. Not only are they looking to adjust our line, but they're also looking for dimensional.
A dimensional variance.
Correct.
Correct. So the last time, unfortunately, we didn't have anyone to speak to this matter. So the owners, if you would like to just briefly explain, I mean, we all got the information and I, you know, it seems relatively clear, but the floor is yours.
So, where Highland Avenue where we live?
You need to identify yourself.
Sorry, can you turn off my just on the top?
I'm Andrea Stewart. Thank you for hearing us. For Highland Avenue, our driveway, actually, part of it is in easement on the Summit Avenue property. So we thought since now we own Summit Avenue where my mother-in-law lives, we would like to get rid of that easement and give us a little bit of a yard because we really have no no yard at all. And that was our thinking.
Great. Yeah. I mean, it again, seems fairly straightforward. Anything further or?
No.
Great. Are there, is there anyone who would like to comment on this proposal? Anyone? Dealer? Dealer? You know, again, we've looked at it. It makes sense because right now your driveway is in the middle of the lot line. It appears that you have no plans to develop the land to the side of you. That would be another issue entirely, but for this matter, we are assuming that there is no intention to develop. And so in accordance with this, what we need to do, you'll bear with me. Yeah, I'd saved everything on my download. I believe as part of this unified development, Ben, we need to meet all of the points.
Yes, Mr. Chair. So if, Mr. Chair, if you would like, I can begin this. I believe there's a conditional motion of approval on the board, correct?
Correct.
If you'd like, Mr. Chair, I can read the findings in the record. The dimensional relief that is being requested is the hardship from it is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or structure and not due to the fiscal economic disability of the applicant. The hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant. Granted, the required variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impaired intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or comprehensive plan. In addition, the planning board finds that the hardship if the variance is not granted amounts to more than a mere inconvenience. This is a conditional approval for the dimensional variance.
And this is the final decision. They don't have to go back to zoning.
Correct. Yep. Administrative subdivisions is one step.
Correct.
So if somebody wants to adopt that.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
All right. All in, or any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh.
I, is this time fast?
Actually before, but go ahead, Brigida. No, if you'd like to ask a question for sure.
I would ask whether the owners will be allowed later on or at any time now or later to build another house on that consolidated.
Again, that is not being requested here and the indication was that there is no intent to build on that. However, that doesn't mean that at some point in the future, they could not come forward and propose that.
That's not a buildable lot, though, as far as I understand.
Right. Well, it's, it's non-conforming. This is one of the problems with, you know, where you and I live, there are a lot of non-conforming lots and, and they've essentially in, I see it would be very difficult to build there, given the concerns that the planning board has raised about water availability and about the size of the lots, which are already non-conforming. This is really just a matter of adjusting a non-conforming lot to be more realistic in terms of the use. So.
So it's on you when these can happen, so.
That's. That's correct. If there's ever any development on that property, if they can't do it by right, then they would have to apply for applications here through the town in order to get some type of relief in order to build on that property. And you will again be noticed and notified of somebody trying to build if they don't, if they can't do it by right.
And all the others would know. They would be identified. Oh, I'm sorry. Could you just identify yourself, Brigida?
I'm Brigida. I'm part of, and I live across the street from the company.
Yeah. We just need to get that on the record. Thank you. Okay. So we had the motion. We have a second vote. Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Mr. Chair, now you need a motion for approval of the administrative subdivision.
Make a motion. No, actually, no. Am I allowed to make a motion as the chair?
Yes.
I was told by one of the members. I don't want to get into that. Right now, but I'm gonna tell you. Now make a motion that we will accept this as an administrative subdivision.
In making that motion, the board finds that the proposed development is consistent with the comp plan. The proposed development complies with the zoning ordinance. Development will not cause significant negative environmental impacts. And the subdivision will not create lots with fiscal constraints that would make development impractical in its permanent fiscal access to a public street.
And I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, again, those subdivision findings, I can send those to you, Brigida. Those are fairly specific in terms of not causing significant environmental impacts or, so there are, there are requirements that have to be met. It's not, you know, no one can develop anywhere without needing those requirements unless, so you would have a chance. Okay. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anna.
Yep. Thank you. Next matter of business is okay, 94 and 108 Child Street, that 100.
Child Street.
94 and 100 Child Street, Warren, Rhode Island. Owner Spencer Morris and Allison Newsom. Proposal, an administrative subdivision under the Unified Development Review to move the lot boundary between 94 and 100 Child Street to improve lot coverage condition for 100 Child Street. Dimensional variance is requested. Take it away.
Oh, if I could just make one point, there's also a lot area variance requested that was not in the application. Because both lots are non-conforming and one is being made more non-conforming and one is being made less non-conforming.
Okay.
So.
So the applicant has to ask to have the application amended on the floor and the board has to vote on that requested amendment.
So why don't we go through the process? And then when we get to the point where we're going to vote, you can request that non-conforming movement, which was not dissimilar to what we just saw. So it's the same, same thing. You've got a non-conforming lot and you're moving a property line within that. You're still creating two non-conforming lots, but you know, that is something we quite often deal with as we just did. So.
Okay. So.
I would first identify yourself on that.
Right. So Spencer Morris, I'm the owner of this property along with my wife, Allison Newsom. Greg Spees is our architect, is here tonight as well. So, yeah, there's multiple things, I think, on the agenda. This being the first of which, which is moving the lot line. And the idea is to, again, as you've already stated, to make one lot less non-conforming and the other lot more non-conforming. But essentially, what we're trying to do, if you're familiar with the properties, we have a commercial building on one lot and a residential building on the other. The impact of moving this lot is, lot line is to improve the parking capacity at the, on the commercial side without reducing the parking capacity on the residential side and still maintaining a yard. So it's, it's just a form, in my view, it's kind of a formality because there's, there's no, no losers and there's an upside to, and I own both properties. So there's no resistance there. Does that kind of outline?
Well, that's, that's certainly the one part. I think that the reason for the variance requested was to ensure that a staircase could be built as well. There, there's.
Kind of another piece.
I'm sorry, what?
That I think is another.
That's part of the, the dimensional, that's for the lot line, I'm sorry, the setback variance, not part of the lot area variance.
We need to deal with these one at a time.
Then I think have the applicant or his, his architect kind of discuss each, yeah, the whole thing is then get into each variance individually.
Yeah, I could do that, but I think to set the table, we should deal with the lot merge first. It'd be nice.
Rhode Island General Law states that you've got to deal with the dimensional variances first in this image.
So I'm totally confused.
No, no, it's a, it's a matter of procedure.
Okay.
So we're essentially looking at, you know, we understand the, the, the overall concept of moving the lot lines.
Okay.
And so now you can do, you know, a quick presentation of, you know, the.
The other, the other, the other issues at hand.
Right. And then we will go back and. You need to identify yourself and your position.
Yeah, I'm Greg Spees, 24 Linden Street, Warren, and architect. Big picture, we're taking the, primarily want to take the commercial building at 100 Child Street and convert half of the building into three residential units. In order to do that, we need to raise the height in one area, manage the setback issues, and, and then this lot line thing. So that's sort of the big picture.
Yep. Thank you.
And maintain this commercial use in the front head.
So I wrote a quick narrative of it and he just explained the scope of work. And basically, we're converting the rear into residential. So, and by activating the roof, we needed additional ways out. So we had one stairway in the rear and one internal stairway. And then we also have an elevator, limited use elevator. So going down through the sections of the code, we, section 3278 has front yards set at 15 feet, but this is a commercial building that was built to the, to the property line. So it's a non-conforming use that's not being changed, but it's not, you can't achieve that 15 foot. That's, so we're asking for a waiver to continue this non-conformity. The side yard on the, number two on the west side is the one that we're just talking about, which was right on the property line, the building was, and what you'd like it to be is 10 feet. And by doing this lot merge that we're just talking about, we would now achieve that. So we actually sort of solve such that, that second issue by the lot merger. The. I mean, by the.
Moving the lot.
Moving the lot. I said, I'm sorry. I call it lot, but yeah, moving the lot. Yes. And the, the other part, the other side yard is on the east side, which is right on Adams Street. And it's similar to the, to Child Street in that it was built that way from the, from the beginning before the code. So it's a non-conformity that will not change. So that stays. The rear, the rear yard is tapered, is technically is, wants to be 20 feet. And if you look at your site plan, it varies from about almost eight feet at one end to about four inches at the, at the other end. And that's, again, a non-conforming condition that we're not changing. But what we are changing is we are going to have the bottom landing of this additional stair from the second floor, from the roof down. And gone over with Mr. Cabral and the plans and he agreed that it may, it would comply and still allow circulation around it.
Let's note here that Mr. Cabral is Matt Cabral.
I'm sorry.
Rhode Island, the one building inspector.
Yes.
And building official.
Yeah.
Yeah. No problem.
So the other non-conformity that we are going to extend is because of this rear setback encroachment, we are adding to another floor of apartments. And so in, in essence, we are going to be extending the non-conformity vertically. But about, only about 10, 12 feet. But we would extend it, but we'd still be below the height limits of the area, 35 foot. We'd be 27 feet on it. So, so that we're asking for the variance to extend a non-conforming condition vertically. And the lot coverage was the sixth point I brought up and that was normally would want to be 30% of the lot, but as you can see, we're, we're in the 80% range. And so we're just asking for the same kind of relief that others enjoy in different parts of the town where we're built right out to the commercial property line. So, and, but I do think that also gets better with the moving of the west property line. And finally, the, the final issue is parking. And parking is what it is. And it is going to take, we have with this change of the property line, we would have five spaces on that west side and we'd have two on the east southeast corner. So we would have seven, three of which would be for the apartments under the new housing allotment, which is one space per unit. And that would leave four for the restaurant, the cider works and the.
Quick question. How many parking spaces will be with 94 Child Street, the two family building?
They have, they have parking on, in their side yard right now. So they have three spaces on the, four spaces already. So they're taking care, yeah. So they're actually in a surplus condition now, given the.
Okay, so there's four, four spaces off of Parker Street.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So. So that basically, those are our, our requests for variance.
Thank you. Any questions? Is there anyone from the public would like to speak about this issue? This is remarkable. Usually we have pitchforks and torches.
Yeah.
Who are accompanying these meetings. Well, again, you know, I can, and these apartments, as Spencer has indicated, are not Airbnb. They are apartments. Any idea what you're going to be renting these for at this point or?
Whatever is necessary to get this job done.
Right.
So it'll be market rate.
Okay.
Are you going to be updating the side in on the front of the building as well, that yellow side in?
So, yeah, it's a little confusing, but this from the street, you probably won't see the construction in the.
But you're like set back, because you have that garden here. But as far as like the existing storefront facade, you're not going to update it at all?
No, it changes.
Okay.
It's actually probably considered that the store.
The vinyl side.
It's actually wood siding.
Oh, it is wood?
Yeah. It's over 15 years old.
Yeah. It looks like it. That's what I was asking.
The bricks of Styles and Harp, which is a great fashion.
Yeah.
Massachusetts. So we'll try to maintain it pretty much as it is.
Great. Well, you know, this is clearly, housing is a concern in the town. And the best place for housing is in redeveloping areas like this. I mean, to me, this is the, the, what we're looking for in terms of creating housing for folks who live in Warren. I don't want to get on a soapbox about this, but you know, this, this concept of redevelopment has unfortunately been tossed aside by the state legislature with these comprehensive plans that hamstring us to some degree in dealing with this. So I applaud you for your work on this and hopefully leadership to other folks who would also look to do something similar to this, where you were able to work within the infra, existing infrastructure to create a, a community that is as inclusive as it can be. So I, you know, good job. Any further comments?
I have a question. At this point, will we see the, will we have to relook at this for when the building plans and stuff are ready or that will all be done administrative?
Well, it's the permanent, like.
Yeah. Okay, so we will. Okay. So this will be our only look at this then.
Yes.
We've also reviewed it with Fire Marshal. Our chief has given us some guidance. I mean, he hasn't approved it at all. We still have to generate.
Yeah. So anything would be conditional upon the approval of the fire department and any other departments in the town, you know, whether it be sewer. Ben, if you could give us a little guidance here on who we, you know, how to vote for this.
Sure. If a member wants to start with a motion and I will.
I'll, I'll make a motion to start with administrative subdivision?
Nope. We start with the dimensional variances.
And make a motion to approve the requested dimensional variances?
And the board finds that approval, that the hardship from which applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or structure, not the surrounding area, and is not due to a fiscal or economic disability of the applicant. The hardship is not the result of any prior action by the applicant. And granted, the required grants will not, not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impaired intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or comprehensive plan. Additionally, the planning board finds that the hardship, if the variances are not granted amounts to more a mere inconvenience. Again, this is a conditional approval.
Predicated on the approvals by the appropriate town, state agent.
State, local approvals.
I'll make a second on that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay. Next motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the administrative subdivision.
And the board finds that the proposed development is consistent with a comprehensive community plan. The proposed development complies with the zoning ordinance. The development will not cause significant negative environmental impacts. The subdivision will not create lots, fiscal constraints that would make development impractical in its permanent fiscal access to a public street.
Second?
We'll make a second on that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Anything further?
No.
Because I was going to read the next one beforehand. All right. Well, you're good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for the special meeting.
You don't want to be here for our next meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
After having you doing. It can be entertaining.
It's good feeling.
If you have the right attitude, Connor.
Yeah. Well, thanks a lot.
Mr. Chair, actually, let's. The applicant, come back for one second. Can you ask the board to amend that application?
Oh.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. But just do that. I think we put it through that.
You need to amend the application to ask for the variance on the lot sizes for the administrative subdivision.
Okay. I'd like to ask the board to amend to what?
What I said.
Yeah.
Well, so we'll amend the.
So lot, your, the lot development, right, so that's 936, you have variances for the setbacks and parking.
Yep.
But it's the lot 940 where you're going to keep.
A reduction.
Or increasing the non-conformity of the lot size. So that's where it is in your application. It's kind of, you're focused on, you're a side work building. It's a residential lot where you're creating non-conformity of lot size and now possibly also a lot, uh, coverage calculation. Like you discussed that, that, that was also part of your, we not, you, the lot coverage just lately with the.
I don't think, I don't think you did a lot coverage calculation for 94 Child Street.
Right. So we can do that.
Well.
Write that up.
Well, so the, the, the request would be to request a variance for, to the administrative subdivision request for reducing the non-conformance, increasing the non-conformance and reducing the lot size for 94 Child Street and also increasing the non-conformance, increasing the lot coverage ratio for 94 Child Street. And you can just say that's what I'm asking for.
That's what I'm asking for.
Did, did I cover it?
Yeah, I think so. Thank you.
See, and we also create a smaller side yard on that, on that side where it's. Because that will only be about four feet from, three feet from the. So that, so we would.
You also need a variance for the, the side yard.
That side. So, so we'll do a dimensional side yard.
So is that a request by the applicant?
Yeah, I guess so. I mean.
Variance on the side yard?
Yes.
Yeah.
We, we are all amenable to hearing this and, and, and doing it on the fly like this.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. So I'm with you.
Now.
Okay.
Sure.
Right. In the board's vote, there's a request by the applicant to amend as discussed prior to the vote and after the vote. So we just need a motion to.
Motion. Motion to approve the amendment. I'll make that.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, now that really isn't.
So that's.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. No, that, thank you, Jenny. That is important. You want to make sure that the details are tended to in this case, because it is.
Yes. So there's no challenges in the future.
No, exactly.
It's, it's always funny when we have non-conformance and then we're making it less non.
Less non.
Or, or we're making it better on one lot, but we can't forget the other one.
That's true.
And, and I think that's what happened.
Yeah, I said, I didn't see that one coming.
Which is what I was asking about.
I'll never be a member of the club.
Well, yeah, exactly. Well, yeah, exactly.
All right, well, thank you very much. The next matter is the state response to our comprehensive plan that was passed by public and by the town council. You all received the letter relative to the edits that are needed for state approval. I've talked to Allison a number of times about this, and these are relatively minor edits. They don't, they don't change anything critical to our intent for this comprehensive plan. And Allison is ready to go with requested revisions. Allison, would you like standing on that or?
Yeah, that's what we received, the letter, and the news is there's only two required edits for state approval of and the edits were minor. So they weren't causing changes or anything significant heavy listening to to make those directions. Really, they were just unmapping what they did by mapping error, the national register boundary had expanded, it wasn't represented correctly on the historic map. And then the CRP wanted clarification language. It included the phantom element, discuss that water type script, something everyone was already aware of. They're not asking to change anything, just putting that language in there and maybe down the road.
And and then making the technical changes about broken links and such.
Oh, right, so there was a few things, yeah, so there was some other tabos or broken links, so I did go in and clean up like things that were obvious and things like that.
Do do we need to see that revised document and vote on that before it goes? Because it sounds like we're in a tight timeframe for their sixteen days.
Yeah, and maybe they offer whatever, we can extend it, but the language, I did circulate, so you have those papers, so it's that language in print, underline, added, and then the updated map. So I didn't need it, that that's all the changes.
Yeah, I think, given the fact that we haven't made any substantive changes to the comprehensive plan, the the difficulty there, Jenny, I think, is that where we open that, it would become a public meeting, I would think.
If you're making substantive changes or if they have required some changes, because the town had already adopted it, we would go through probably like a public hearing process.
Technical.
Right.
Yeah, so I, it's my opinion and the state's opinion that this doesn't need to go for a public hearing. But I just wanted to obviously share the planning board, the, you know, results of the state's review and the change they had requested and show you what I was changing. You know.
Do we need to vote on, you know, authorizing Allison to do this?
Yeah, you motion to approve on the recommended altered edits.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Just for the record, it's going to be resubmitted.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
They tomorrow and then we'll again, the final approval letter, they circulated, included within the final, like, yeah.
Yay.
What's the timeline that this becomes like a reference for us that we can now refer to during meeting?
Already.
Already, as long as they're not vested, right?
What's it adopted?
Fall, so it's already your working local comprehensive plan. The state approval just means that the state has to adhere to that plan when doing work or projects.
But not to bring us down a rabbit hole and go into further conversation, but Seth is green.
I wouldn't even.
Okay, all right, yeah, yeah.
Well, but a a different rabbit hole, I think, is that there's a large number of action items with relation to various ordinances in town that we'll we'll have to start on, so.
Oh, definitely.
You guys can start implementing the actions within your comprehensive plan and any applications that were submitted as of the date of that approved comprehensive plan, that's your document.
It's a two-step process, you know, too. I mean, one is we're going to be able to operate on every comprehensive plan, but we're also going to need to change those ordinances. I mean, the zoning ordinances in the town have not really been appropriately addressed for, you know, as long as I've been here, which is way too long.
So that that's kind of my question is, is this is, it it's a heavy lift. It's not, there's there's not any low hanging fruit here on the on the zoning ordinance.
There might be some more immediate needs, and I think, you know, we should, we could, Allison, I think we can draw on your expertise on that as well. And and as well, I think Tony, you know, in terms of, and and Ben, obviously, those things that we would see coming to the fore relatively soon. You know, I we can bite size this thing a little bit.
I would just prioritize and execute, get a list of everything that needs to be addressed, find out what the priorities are based on time or necessities. And then we just take it on a priority and execute as a team like one at a time and not try to overwhelm ourselves and with the lack of professional support.
I mean, we might even be able to do that while everybody's naming.
Who does that?
I'm sorry, what?
The zoning board, who who does this?
The planning board actually establishes the ordinances, so.
So would this also apply to other ordinances like the tree ordinance, which also needs revisions? Or does the tree commission do that?
So within your implementation program, right, spreadsheet, you have your action items and then, so there are some specific, you know, recommendations for zoning amendments or ordinances that you'd like to implement, and it would have the responsible party, right? I mean, of course, planning board, zoning board, I mean, planning board, the town council are almost always going to be involved in any ordinance, zoning ordinance, chief, you know, but there might be, like, said, there's something specific, the tree commission, tree, tree commission probably also listed in there, which doesn't exclude it, there's other ordinance that needs to be.
Well, and and there are changes, so having just sat on the tree canopy ad hoc mission with a bunch of recommendations that came out of that, some of which apply to the subdivision line development regulations, I would also like to see if we can get those addressed fairly quickly so that when the next comprehensive permit comes forward or the next commercial development proposal, some of these heat island and sustainability issues can be addressed.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense to me. I think what would be helpful would be if the tree commission specifically looked at the ordinances and proposed language.
That would be lovely if there was the capacity and the expertise on the commission to do that. Have they been on that commission? They often look to Allison or me for that guidance.
So kind of, yeah, I mean, I think we're getting a little off the topic, but the heads, there is grant fund.
Yes, and has there too, yes.
I think you'll see something coming.
Okay, just again, I I think, you know, like, we can, as the planning board, we have to be realistic in terms of the the depth to which we look at any given ordinance. So the more help we get from the outside, the better it is. I mean, I I feel like.
So will the PEZ grant also look at this land development and subdivision regulations? Or just the tree commission regulations?
I I don't know exactly, but I know that they talk about green and complete streets ordinance, they are done and then.
Well, and the green and complete streets would fold in. The green and complete streets would also fold into the subdivision rigs, right?
Possibly, there's different ways to approach that.
Okay.
So depends on, you know, if you can, that's an option.
Okay.
Okay, so it sounds like we have a a two-step process here. One is establishing for the planning board those issues that we feel are most pertinent and timely. The second is to talk to the various committees and groups within the town and say, if you see an ordinance that you believe needs to be changed, it's not just the tree commission, there's any number of the historic district. I mean, the these are folks who need to come forward with a specific recommendation. I mean, I hate dealing with a blank table, you know? I mean, ideally, you have the the at least the germ of an idea that you're able to to discuss and that serves as that purpose. So I I do think that each one of the groups and committees within the town have to, boards have to establish that level of seriousness of purpose to me in terms of each one of these things.
Yeah, we should hold them accountable. I mean, it's a group effort, we shouldn't do the whole lift here, right? So I think it's giving them the direction like, hey, this is where you have input, this is your timeline on the input, get it into us, and then it goes to discussion.
So what you could do is send them out at each, so within the implementation program, there'll be different boards listed, and you just, you send them their action, say.
Yeah.
This is the comprehensive plan, been approved, these are the action items. And then check in on, you know, status and usually there's a five-year implementation report due to the state, but at least getting that out sort of that later and then checking in, you know, annually on the progress.
We can make deliverables like, you know, where we're getting more frequent updates on verbiage and input into ordinances from them. And then I think it could be structured in a way where it's easily maintained, low pressure on the full-time staff. And then it releases a load on us because it holds them accountable to their respective actions.
Great. Well, it's all good. We've do we need to make, no, I think we're we're done, yeah. Is there anyone from the public who would like to say anything? Is there anyone? Well, thank you all for making the special meeting, I appreciate it. And, you know, if they were all this easy, it wouldn't be wonderful.
Well, certainly load and our load for the next meeting.
Yeah, I, but the next meeting is key. My sense is that we're talking about one meeting here, Ben, I mean, the shotless green.
Okay, I I'm not as optimistic as you are.
Yeah, I I. Oh, yes, could I have a motion to adjourn, Al- Allison?
So moved.
Anyone? Thanks, Tim. Second? All in favor?